Calling to all of the Monday, October 16th, 2017 regular meeting of the 36th Council of the City of Berkeley. Spoucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Potem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Gravlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kadekko.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Councilmember Turbrack.
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Here.
First author of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Your Honor, make a motion to approve the agenda with one alteration. I'd like to suggest that we move the communications before the closed session so that as we move into closed session then we can just adjourn from there without holding these folks here all night.
Very good. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by several people. All at the same time. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gravlin.
Yes.
Kadekko.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes. And now would you please stand for the invocation, Pastor Matt Brunner is with us.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you and we thank you for the blessings that you've given us, the many blessings in our lives individually, as a community, and as a nation. I thank you for this opportunity for us to come together, to speak with those in our local government and to have our voices be heard. Thank you that we live in a nation where that can be done. And I ask for your wisdom for these council members as they make decisions tonight and moving forward, that you would guide them and lead them in every decision they make. Father, I also thank you for our schools and the impact that they have in our community. And I just pray your blessing over all the kids in elementary through high school and that as they continue through this year that you would watch over them and help them to learn and help them to understand how to make our society and our culture better. Pray all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Constitution, the Constitution under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord, and the justice of all.
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When an individual has completed their comments, we ask that you refrain from gestures of approval or disapproval because this can be intimidating for some residents. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Sarah Ross and I live on Cumberland in Berkeley. I am the president of the Berkeley Area PTSA Council, which is comprised of leaders and representatives from all the PTAs from the Berkeley schools. And I am here tonight to present the City of Berkeley with a Michigan PTA Centennial Supporter Certificate. This is from the Michigan PTA and it recognizes the City of Berkeley for pledging support of the mission of the association and the celebration of 100 years of advocacy, service, and training as a centennial supporter for 2017 and 2018. The Michigan PTA is preparing to celebrate 100 years of advocating for every child throughout Michigan. Michigan PTA is a volunteer association and we're very proud to have reached this milestone in our history. We're the largest child advocacy association and our efforts have accomplished many important initiatives, including kindergarten in the public school system, tobacco and weapon-free schools, a separate criminal justice system for juvenile offenders, federally funded public school hot lunches, drug-free school zones, a 25 mile per hour school speed zone, content rating systems for television programs, just to name a few things. We're looking forward to another 100 years of advocacy and we want to thank you for your support for our children and our schools. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to present this certificate to you.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Paul Benson. I'm a physician and owner of the Bewell Medical Center on 11 Mile Road. I come here today not with my physician hat on, but my president's hat from the Berkeley Rotary Club. Our organization has been around in Berkeley for 68 years. Every year we have an annual Pancake Breakfast, which is our major fundraiser. I'm leaving some flyers. I did not bring any tickets to sell. We're dedicating this Pancake Breakfast to one of our members who passed away a month ago, Maury Dubin, who was a charter member of our club. I'm concerned that our club may be going away as well. We normally have a register of about 25 members. Every year it's been dwindling. People move, people retire, and people die. We're down to six members, which is a pretty sad state. And in the past from Berkeley, we've had city managers, we've had police chiefs, we've had librarians. We really have no members at all representing the city. And we've done a lot of good things. We've had foreign exchange students for many, many years. We've supported Lids for Kids with the Police Department. A number of years ago, we celebrated our 100th anniversary by giving the Berkeley Library $10,000 to put a computer room in. And if we don't improve our membership and have a successful Pancake Breakfast, the six members are going to go away. So I'm pleading with the city that we can get some representation in our club. We're resuming our meetings at Crispellis on Mondays at 12:15. Have a nice lunch, have a speaker. Perhaps somebody here wants to be a speaker at one of our meetings. And we're hoping we can reinvent our club and hopefully we can count on councils in the city to help us because I'd really hate to stop doing good things in the city and in the world. Thank you very much. And I will leave this at the front door.
Doug Deeds, proud citizen of Berkeley. We need more citizens of Berkeley to step up, whether or not volunteer, different organizations within the city, such as the Rotary Club. There are a lot of organizations out there. The Parade Committee, just a lot of things that citizens can step up. The Beautification Committee, they can step up and help. Thank you.
Hi. Ryan Gazun, citizen of Berkeley. I live on Kipling. I was unable to get my ducks in a row with the organization that I was trying to work with, but next month in November is the International Diabetes Awareness Month. It is also, November 11th is going to start my 40th year as being a type 1 diabetic. And to celebrate, I'm actually, because it is a celebration to be in as good of shape as I am, I'm not really in good shape, as good of shape as I am. I'm celebrating next month by, I'm going to Philadelphia and I'm going to go run up the steps like Rocky, the Philadelphia Museum. But there's, I don't know how many diabetics there are in Berkeley, but it definitely is a full-time care occupation to be a diabetic or to care for a diabetic. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Spoucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve of the Minutes, matter of approving Minutes of the regular 36th City Council meeting on Monday, October 2nd, 2017. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1319. And proclamation number P0717, matter of declaring the month of October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll?
Gravlin.
Yes.
Kadekko.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes. And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number three?
Resolution number R3617, matter of designating Saturday, December 2nd, 2017, for the annual holiday parade and tree lighting ceremony in Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R3617?
Move to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Kadekko.
Support.
Support by Mayor Potem Baker. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those that don't know, Mr. Wadika, who is actually returning to the DDA Board after a bit of a hiatus, he is a property owner on Coolidge, so he'll be taking one of the Coolidge spots. If you recall, the DDA Board is purposely divided between representation for Coolidge, 12 Mile, and then At Large. So those three representative districts are divided equally. We're happy to say Mr. Wadika will be well representing the Coolidge portion. And the process that brought this in front of this council is, the DDA has actually redone their process. They do intake, application intake, interviews, and this recommendation comes to you with the full support of the DDA Board. All present at the last meeting voted in favor of pushing this forward to this body. You have Mr. Wadika's application in hand, in your packet, and again, the DDA asked for an affirmative vote.
Thank you. Any discussion on this appointment? Councilmember?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to say, as our liaison to the DDA, I'm really happy with this appointment. He brings tremendous experience and credentials back to the board, as was mentioned, and we look forward to his voice and his leadership helping represent Coolidge and on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekko?
I was just going to say, welcome back to Mr. Wadika. I remember when he was doing the work over 20 years ago, so that institutional memory helps.
It does.
Oops. He did want to say something. Councilmember Stedman?
Yes, I remember Wayne from 20 years ago when he first started, basically started the DDA and had a great deal to do with our very failed intersection with all of Brooks. But it was our DDA and me as a representative who thought that was a really good idea. But he's been, done wonderful things for the community. He's been a great volunteer. You're welcome.
Thank you. Very good. Then we're ready to take the vote. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll on M7317?
Kadekko.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gravlin.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes.
And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number three?
Resolution number R3617, matter of designating Saturday, December 2nd, 2017, for the annual holiday parade and tree lighting ceremony in Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R3617?
Move to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Kadekko.
Support.
Support by Mayor Potem Baker. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Berkeley, our annual Berkeley parade is coming up. The dedicated volunteers that go into making that a event a possibility are represented here this evening with Ms. Sutro and Ms. Coon, co-chairs, right? If I'm saying, yes, co-chairs.
My new co-chair, yes. It's going to happen. Like everybody else, we're looking for volunteers, definitely, to help us out on our parade staff. Volunteers for the day of would be awesome, just to close off the streets and to get everything in line and have, you know, that wonderful day happen. We would like to extend an invitation to our mayor. Our new mayor, okay, and city council, to participate in our parade and in the festivities here at the gazebo when Santa Claus will be given the key to the city. So we would like to invite you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all you do and your committee for making this happen. This is a wonderful event. And you are assuring us tonight that Santa Claus will be there.
Absolutely.
Very good. That is going to be very important for so many of our little boys and girls who look forward to his arrival.
Absolutely. We've gotten word from the North Pole that he will be making his entrance. He will be coming down 12 Mile and then he'll be greeting all of the little children here and adults.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll on R3617?
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Kadekko.
Yes.
Gravlin.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes.
And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M7417, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement and sign on behalf of the City of Berkeley for Sen Pro P1000 Series mail machine for 60 months, five years, in an amount not to exceed $226.67 a month, from Pitney Bowes 755 West Big Beaver Road, Suite 475, Troy, Michigan 48084, from account number 101265728000.
Is there a motion to approve M7417?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gravlin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This comes to you through the normal means. We've gone out, we've looked at various vendors to supply a contract for this vital piece of our office activities. Our city clerk, as well as other members of the staff, looked high and low for vendors that could provide this machinery. And I'm happy to report that she has brought to you this evening a lease agreement that would actually be a savings for the city, not only in the month-to-month, we're actually saving about $30, so about $360 a year over the course, multiply that by five, but also the type of machinery utilizes only a certain kind of ink. It's a red ink only, so we'll be saving on that as well. So large kudos to our city clerk. It'll be a five-year contract and, again, this is not a new piece of machinery for us, but it's something that serves our office well, so we look forward to having one for the next five years, if council sees fit.
Is this additional to the one we have?
No, this would be, this would replace the one that we have. So we previously had a contract with this vendor. We were going with Pitney Bowes for a while, but when you go through the, when you go through pricing these things out, sometimes you find a lower bid, and we were fortunate enough to do that this time.
Any questions, discussion on this matter? Seeing none, then, Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll on M7417?
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gravlin.
Yes.
Kadekko.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes.
And now we come to the Communications portion of tonight's meeting. And who should be first? Mayor Potem.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Wow, record time here. Communications might take longer than the actual meeting did. We'll try to not cut off on that frontier. So, real briefly, our Downtown Development Authority did meet last Wednesday, and we are very happy to welcome back to the Board Wayne Wadika, who, as mentioned earlier, brings terrific experience back to the Board. And I want to thank everyone for their input and consideration of the design guidelines material that was recently shared in a work session and continues to be available for comments on our website, which is downtownberkeley.com. And again, thanks to all of you who were able to come out for the final ladies' night and also the art and about last week's Friday. Terrific event, what a great way to wrap up the season. And we're very excited to bring additional programming in the months and years to come with all of our terrific work through the Downtown Development Authority. And stay tuned for the new crosswalks, too. Those will be here real soon. The Historical Committee also wants to remind you that new coffee mug sales continue to be strong. They are available for sale in City Hall and at the library. And please, if you'd like to get one, get one soon because they are going quickly. And if you haven't been to the museum in a while, please visit there as well. They're open most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00 and Wednesdays from 10:00 to 1:00. And let's see, I want to end with Ruth Ann Shebaker, who once said, "Each day comes bearing its own gifts. Untie the ribbons. Each day comes bearing its own gifts. Untie the ribbons." And when we think about what's going on here in Berkeley, we don't just untie ribbons, we cut them. There'll be a ribbon shortage soon with all the grand openings we've had lately. I want to congratulate the schools on their series of ribbon-cutting ceremonies. I know there was one today and a couple more coming up tomorrow and next week. There was a ribbon-cutting ceremony last week at Decipher Corp. They have a fantastic new location on Coolidge, which is great. We'd love to see the energy that they bring and the technology that they enable through their data analytics platform. It's really cool. More businesses continue to come into the downtown and we're excited to keep those scissors sharp so we can do more ribbon-cutting here as this really great trend continues, right? When we see all that's been going on with our downtown, the businesses that are coming in, the great work with the schools as well, the community continues to thrive, and these are yet another example of the great trajectory that our city's on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Just as a footnote to that, all of these new businesses that are coming in, that have come in in the last few years, are greatly due to the work of the Downtown Development Authority. And since that was created 20 years ago with Wayne Wadika, they have a lot of very, very wonderful things that have happened in the city. In terms of the library, Friends of the Library is having a fall book sale this week, this weekend, Friday, October 20th, 10:00 to 6:00, and Saturday, October 21st, from 10:00 to 3:00. And she said, it's saying the days and times for the sale are new this year. I'm not sure what they were last year. I can't remember that. Anyways, please come up and purchase a book. I think it may be too late to donate, but you could always ask. In terms of, you've missed Cocktails in Color in one more time because it was tonight. Edimichi's. And October 24th, Sprouting, Silking, and Micrograining, How to Make the Most of Nuts, Seeds, and Grains, that sounds interesting. For youth, Thursday, October 19th, at 6:00 at JPM, JP Park, JC Park. They're having a Halloween-themed event with stories and a play, and that sounds very interesting. Thursday, October 26th, at 6:30, Creatures of the Night. And that is going to be at the, I think that's going to be at the Community Center, but the Hollow Nature Center will bring four live animals as part of this presentation. Saturday, October 28th, The Lost Village, fully animated, Only Take on the Smurfs, The Mysterious Maps That Smurfettes and Her Friends, Brainy, Clumsy, and Happy, On An Exciting Race Through The Forbidden Forest, Leading To The Discovery Of The Biggest Secret In Smurf History. This film is rated PG, and they will provide popcorn. No registration is necessary. Monday, still every Monday through October, well, October 9th has passed, but from October 23rd through November 13th, is Lapse-Head Storytime. Principal Storytime is Tuesdays at 10:30 in the morning. And Parent-Toddler Storytime is Thursdays at 10:30 in the morning. So there's a lot happening at the Berkeley Public Library. I missed the last Beautification Committee meeting. Nothing, nothing new. Probably we will be announcing soon if we have the holiday lights dressed again. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things from the Chamber of Commerce. They recently initiated a gift certificate program in Berkeley, run through the Chamber of Commerce and through the school district. You can purchase gift certificates to be used at 30 different Berkeley businesses. They come in denominations of $5, $10, $20, and $25. And the idea of this is, if you are a business and you want to give something to your employees but you want to support Berkeley, you'll give them certificates that they can use in the Berkeley businesses. Through the schools, they're hoping that if somebody wants to give the teacher a gift certificate, they can buy one and it'll be for a Berkeley business. So they're trying to keep the money in the City of Berkeley. There's, I won't read all the numbers, there's 30 different businesses, excuse me, that have already signed up. So I think it's a real good thing. It kicked off, I think, a week ago today. So we should see good things from that. The other is the State of the Cities and the Best of Berkeley Awards are coming up on October 27th. It's an 8:00 AM breakfast this year rather than a luncheon, with presentations by the fabulous Berkeley Mayor, the Huntington Woods Mayor, and the Berkeley School Superintendent. This will be at Farina's Banquet Center, 2485 Coolidge. The tickets are $22 if you purchase them before October 23rd and $30 after October 23rd. And just remember, this is going to be the last time for our mayor. You want to hear the mayor, get your tickets now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some items coming up from the Parks and Rec Department. First, we have Tail on the Trail, Halloween-themed this Thursday, the 19th. That's at 6:00 PM at JC Park. Kids come in costumes, they will walk, read through the park, and collect candy. I know the Parks and Recreation Department has been busily preparing their costumes. I'm sure they will be ready for this. Last year was a great time and it was very well-attended as well. The Berkeley Boo Fest, which is Parks and Recreation and the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, are putting together the Berkeley Boo Fest. That is Monday, October 30th, various times, but it's available from 5:00 to 7:30 PM. Call or stop in for the tickets and those tickets are $5. And the seniors, be sure to stop in for a list of all of the upcoming lunches and holiday trips that the Parks and Rec Department has coming up. So if you're not aware, please stop in to the Parks and Rec Department. It's a pretty packed holiday schedule with lunches and trips. I want to make sure everybody has a chance to sign up for those. And finally, the city's taken a number of concrete steps to help alleviate potential flooding issues happening again. I know we talked about the capacity study last meeting. We've done some other things, but one thing that we have not yet been able to finalize is the program to help the residents with the backflow preventers and how that's going to work. I know that city manager is certainly still working hard on actually having an educational event for folks, and I understand that there's a couple weeks left for the And the idea of this is, if you are a business and you want to give something to your employees, but you want to support Berkeley, you'll give them certificates that they can use in the Berkeley businesses. Through the schools, they're hoping that if somebody wants to give the teacher a gift certificate, they can buy one, and it'll be for a Berkeley business. So they're trying to keep the money in the city of Berkeley. There's, I won't read all the numbers, there's thirty different businesses, excuse me, that have already signed up. So I think it's a real good thing. It kicked off, I think, a week ago today. So we should see good things from that. The other is the State of the Cities and the Best of Berkeley Awards are coming up on October twenty-seventh. It's an eight a.m. breakfast this year rather than a luncheon, with presentations by the fabulous Berkeley Mayor, the Huntington Woods Mayor, and the Berkeley School Superintendent. This will be at Farina's Banquet Center, two-four-eight-five, Coolidge. The tickets are twenty-two dollars if you purchase them before October twenty-third, and thirty dollars after October twenty-third. And just remember, this is going to be the last time for our mayor. You want to hear the mayor, get your tickets now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Terbrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some items coming up from the Parks and Rec Department. First, we have Tail on the Trail, Halloween-themed this Thursday, the nineteenth. That's at six p.m. at JC Park. Kids come in costumes, they will walk, read through the park, and collect candy. I know the Parks and Recreation Department has been busily preparing their costumes. I'm sure they will be ready for this. Last year was a great time, and it was very well-attended as well. The Berkeley Boo Fest, which is Parks and Recreation and the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, are putting together the Berkeley Boo Fest. That is Monday, October thirtieth, various times, but it's available from five to seven-thirty p.m. Call or stop in for the tickets, and those tickets are five dollars. And the seniors, be sure to stop in for a list of all of the upcoming lunches and holiday trips that the Parks and Rec Department has coming up. So if you're not aware, please stop in to the Parks and Rec Department. It's a pretty packed holiday schedule with lunches and trips. Want to make sure everybody has a chance to sign up for those. And finally, the city's taken a number of concrete steps to help alleviate potential flooding issues happening again. I know we talked about the capacity study last meeting. We've done some other things, but one thing that we have not yet been able to finalize is the program to help the residents with the backflow preventers and how that's going to work. I know that city manager is certainly still working hard on actually having an educational event for folks, and I understand that there's a couple weeks left for the, where the permit fees are waived. While I am only one person, I'm fairly confident that my colleagues up here will not have a problem extending that, should the city manager request that we extend that, to give residents some more time to make sure that they're doing this properly and with the most information possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ravelin?
The Tree Board met last Monday. The final number of trees to be planted are ninety-one, both private and public. Mr. Schul reported the Harvard Project is going along well. Forty trees were removed, but seventy-five are scheduled to be replanted along Harvard, so that is great news. There are also two Tree Board openings. So again, there's a lot of ways to get involved in Berkeley. Two Tree Board openings and one student opening, and they will meet again November thirteenth. Likewise, you can get involved in the Environmental Committee. They're always looking for new members. They'll be meeting on the twenty-sixth at six-thirty in the Public Safety Conference Room, and they will continue to look at ways they can recommend to the city to encourage water retention. The Planning Commission met on the tenth in the work session, which Mr. Baumgarten can elaborate on, as I was unable to attend. And lastly, not to belabor the point, but I would also like to re-highlight the twentieth as Mammography Day, but encourage everyone that every day is a great day for a mammogram, because early detection is best. It's best for the chance for early removal and for the, to reduce the odds of recurrence. It's the best means to take a breath and seek doctors and plans that you're comfortable with. And we will keep proclaiming and talking and walking and painting every town pink until we eradicate this, eradicate this menace and the menace of all cancers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo those sentiments tenfold. For all of you that haven't heard, as of October first, you no longer need to buy tags, those two-dollar tags, for your yard waste. You can just put your bags out. There's no more charge for that. So feel free to put those out, and they will pick them up without any problem. The Zoning Board of Appeals has been pretty quiet lately. However, we are meeting on November thirteenth in this room, and they're going to have three agenda items on that evening. You've heard me speak, and city man, our city attorney, John Stearns, brought it up last meeting about the distracted driving bills. And I want to thank Senator Marty Nolenberg and his aide, legislative aide, Sean. Sean brought over Senate Bill five-eighty that came out of committee last week, and they don't know when they're going to be able to vote on it. And I spoke with Representative Robert Wittenberg this evening, and he is working on it on the House side. So the sooner we can get some kind of distracted driving bill on the books and signed by the governor, the better it will be for all of us. And Veterans Day, and I have to ask Councilmember Blanchard, is it Saturday this year? Are they still going to have the ceremony on Saturday? Because they normally do it on the day.
As far as I know, yes.
Yeah, so, and I want to thank all of those who are serving, have served, and will serve. And I want to thank all the volunteers for the upcoming election and wish Ms. Boucher the best of luck for an easy day that day. Encourage everyone to vote on November seventh. It's going to, you know, it's a long day for the volunteers, and I want to thank them in advance for all the work that they're going to be putting in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a couple items tonight. As Ms. Ravelin said, our Planning Commission did meet in a work session atmosphere on the tenth and allowed the applicant to walk through their intent for an updated site plan for the Loslet School Building and rear area. They are, the concept that they looked at was a building, was a single building pushed as far forward towards Coolidge as possible that houses the apartments and then maintaining the townhouses along Oxford. Consensus seems to be that it was moving in the right direction, but there's still much, much work to do. And we hope that continues on October twenty-fourth, which is the Planning Commission's next regular meeting. We should have the agenda out by the end of this week. I've not heard from the applicant yet on whether or not they intend to be on it, but we certainly have put in a placeholder on that, and I hope they return to continue the discussion. So that was that meeting. Also, as Councilmember Terbrecht said, we are putting together an educational event at the library. There's a local plumbing company called Paul C. Scott who has volunteered to come in and answer as many questions as they can and discuss backwater check valves. People need to understand how the possible effect of their, on their home, as well as the layouts. It's amazing how intricate these installations can be, given the various housing types we have in the city of Berkeley. So great chance to learn a lot of information from an expert instead of some government guy. So we're looking forward to having the date rolled out for that coming up soon. I would also, oh, last one. I appreciate the, all the new mentions for our new businesses. Certainly excited for those, but I had the real pleasure of meeting with the owners of Durst. It only took me almost a year and a half to do it. I've been a shopper there for years, but Durst is a stalwart. They do so many fantastic things for our community and have such a great history here. It was, it was really, it was my, it was my pleasure to get to meet with them. So we, we're just knocking out of the park. Old businesses, new businesses, you can't beat Berkeley. So we, I appreciate the time, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess we can transition a little bit from what Councilman Kadakel talked about, at least for our part, when he mentioned the progress that the state legislature is making, or at least we appear to be taking steps toward making progress on the distracted driving, which would be a very, very helpful, sorry about that, very helpful tool for us at the local level and our public safety personnel to be able to deal with such things. But with what one hand giveth, the other hand taketh away. For those of you who were able to look at your email today, I did forward to council a link to a timely article that appeared in the Detroit Free Press today, really just another article about, I call it the erosion of home rule, or whatever you like, but it was an article reporting on various state legislative efforts that will regulate certain subject matters at the state level and take it away from you elected officials at the local level, even though this is the place where the residents come and expect you and ask you to help them with what are really local concerns. But right, wrong, or otherwise, there are a number of subject areas where the folks in Lansing believe it's better to have uniformity throughout the state rather than leaving it to the locals. And we've seen numerous examples of that, from telecommunications. Councilman Blanchard reminded me today of a biggie that we hear about every July, fireworks regulation. And of course, the focus of the article was really on the bills that would take away local authority over regulating short-term rentals, which is something that within the last year, this council has looked at and referred to our Planning Commission to deal with, as there are a number of local concerns associated with that. So I have anything specific to say beyond that, other than just, I guess, a sigh and an eye roll that in their zest sometimes to make things easier for the good citizens of Michigan, we really are getting our hands tied more and more often by the state legislature when it comes to addressing these subject matters, which have traditionally been local concerns. That's my report.
Thank you. We all give a sigh and an eye roll when we observe what comes from Lansing and Washington, which reminds us that the elections are coming up, and I have a question for our city clerk. When is the last day for absentee?
The last day for absentee mayor to be mailed out is this Saturday, November fourth, I believe, and will be in the office from nine to two. But if the registered voters want to still vote absentee, they're welcome to come to the City Hall up until four p.m. to issue, for us to issue them a ballot, but they do have to vote at the City Hall.
Thank you. And thank you to Sarah Ross and the PTA for that recognition. The work of the PTA is really critical to support education and to give an opportunity for our teachers to be successful and for our students to be successful. And it's a community effort, and we're really thankful for the activity and the passion that folks in Berkeley bring to the PTA, and of course, obviously, across the state. So thank you for that award to the city. And with that, we are ready, Ms. Boucher, to move along to item number five.
Close session, matter of considering whether to meet in closed session after conclusion of the regular meeting to discuss attorney-client privileged communication.
Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Move to adjourn to closed session.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadakel?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman and Blanchard and all above. Now, before we leave, just before we take the vote, remember that we are not coming back except to adjourn. So that's for the audience here.
And Mayor, if you just announce that you'll be adjuring the regular meeting and convening in closed session, we don't even need to come back.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Ravelin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now we adjourn to closed session.